Hi, everyone. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of Tuesday, July 11. May I please have an approval of the agenda? Is there a second? Okay, thank you. I would like to take a moment to welcome Natalie Gammons, our new student representative. Thank you so much for being here on a beautiful July evening. Yes, welcome. We look forward to lots of good conversation and input from you this year. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, I will go ahead and move on to presentations and discussions of issues of interest to the committee, and we'll start with summer math. Mr. Horton.
All right. Since I'll be presenting here, I don't know if you might be more comfortable.
We may be.
In the front row.
Thank you very much.
So my name is Michael Horton. I'm the Director of Curriculum and Assessment for STEM. This is a report on a project that started just about a year ago when I moved from the Assistant Principal position at elementary school into the current district curriculum position. If I'm nervous at all tonight, it's just because I'm really excited about this, okay? This is something that's kind of true to my heart and my passion where I started as a high school math teacher. And some of you know me that I'm a little competitive about our MCAS scores and CPI scores. So there's a few things that are happening in the district to try to bring the math scores back up to where the high school ELA scores are, which is kind of one of my personal goals. I should say that this is kind of the first of a three-part series. Mr. Cozart, Dr. Bucky, Dr. Cohen and I have been talking about giving the school committee an update on math throughout the district, and we looked at all the things going on, and we decided it would be best just to do it in smaller doses. So this is going to focus mostly on high school. In the future, we'll talk about some model changes at the middle school with math, and then later this summer or early fall, we'll talk about the transition to Eureka Math from math expressions at NIS. That will also touch on NES, but today, we're going to focus mostly on algebra project going on the high school, and I call it summer math. So this is actually an old slide from 2011, but it gives us a nice visual of different math tracks and different math options. If you look at the middle row, you can see that for high school, grade nine, grade 10, grade 11, and grade 12, there are basically five courses for students to take to get to calculus, okay? AP Calculus here at Nantucket High School. So Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, Precalc, and Calculus. It's five courses in four years, and that's bad math, okay? The traditional track in the past has been for students to double up Algebra II and Geometry. This is going to show you different options and remind me to come back to this slide later, which is going to be a segue to part two for CPS later on this summer. But I want to focus here on the way in the past, it's been that students are taking Algebra I freshman year, and then they would double up Algebra II and Geometry sophomore year. This used to work a little bit when we had block scheduling because there were four courses each semester, so you had eight for the year. So a student, if they struggled in a course, they actually could take it again or repeat it second semester and still get it done within that year, okay? So it allowed some flexibility. This was going on when I started as a math teacher at the high school back in 2002, and as the math department head, I received a lot of parent complaints that students had to give up music or an art in order to double up in math. We even had a test prep back then. So some kids were tripling up in math, and I just, you know, as someone who loves the arts and went to a liberal arts college, I thought that wasn't, you know, great for our students overall, wasn't creating well-rounded, balanced students. So started connecting more with Patty Haley at the middle school. And Patty had been doing this for years where we started offering more algebra in grade eight. So students were identified in grade seven to start algebra course in grade eight, and that would allow students to basically do Algebra I in grade eight, Geometry in grade nine, Algebra II, Precalc, and Calculus. So that's kind of turned into the traditional track for, you know, many of our students. I'm going to talk a lot tonight about options, flexibility, and entry points. And those three phrases all connect to one another and give kids, you know, choices, okay? Which is something that I'm big about. So what has been happening is that only some students, okay, would be eligible for Algebra I in grade eight. And a couple of years ago, the math department said, you know, having more algebra down in grade eight is good for all students, okay? So math teachers kind of secretly, you know, in a way, you know, started sneaking more and more algebra down into grade eight. And the school committee a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, we got into pre-contested debate about, well, if they're doing algebra in grade eight, are they getting the grade eight standards along with that? The state was trying to move to an algebra part test or a grade eight part test for grade eight, and districts would actually have to choose one or the other. You might remember that conversation a couple of years ago. So that was not great because it was a discussion of whether are students getting everything they're supposed to be getting if they basically skip grade eight and have just Algebra I, okay? And then are the students who are having just grade eight, are they missing out on the algebra? So what has happened is that when students got some algebra two years ago down at grade eight, they moved to high school. The initial plan was they should continue Algebra I Part II in high school, okay? Basically making Algebra II your course, all right? Which is not bad if you're an algebra, you know, proponent. The more time, the more effort spent on algebra, the better, okay? It just didn't quite jive with scheduling and part one, part two, singletons. So last year, this year, we just finished all freshmen, all, is there asterisk? That's 98% of freshmen took geometry, okay? Regardless of what they had in grade eight. So some kids had a full kind of honors algebra with Alice Crowley, a full complete course, and some students had kind of a partial algebra class, which I'm calling Algebra I Part One, but they never really completed a full algebra course. So there are many students this past year who had geometry as a freshman, and if they wanted to go on to Algebra II, they couldn't, okay? Because they never completed Algebra I. Algebra I is a prerequisite for Algebra II, okay? It's a continuation. You might add another variable, it gets a little more complex, a little deeper. You can't double up Algebra I and Algebra II. You can double up Geometry and Algebra II, okay? But that wasn't what was happening. Students were in Geometry, they weren't ready for Algebra II, so came up a few ideas, okay? And that's what's going on this summer. During this year, we basically, central office, Mr. Cozart kind of nudged me along, okay? So it's not my idea, it's Mr. Cozart's idea, and I just kind of grabbed the ball and ran with it, okay? And what we did is we came up with four free options for all freshmen, okay, this past year, to complete Algebra I Part One if they wanted to, okay? By the way, in this last slide, not everyone needs to get the Calculus senior year, okay? It's just we'd like to have that option. And if we weren't having students take Algebra II sophomore year, then that option is off the table, which I wasn't a big fan of because students mature at different rates, and mathematically they develop at different rates. This is the ultimate kind of carrot here, but it's not the right fit for everyone, so I need to say that. Many students would just be fine, Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, and Precalc, or Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, and AQR, or stats, or personal finance, another math credit for four years of math. But just to keep Calculus on the table, for a good number of our freshmen to complete Algebra I Part II, came up with four free options. The first was, a couple of students actually began in the middle of the year, taking an online course through Virtual High School, which we collaborated with Cape Cod Collaborative, they had a few seats, and a few students actually took the online Algebra I Part II between January and June. When they were offered these options, they just, they were going to be away this summer. They didn't think they could get the online done in the summer, they wanted to do it then. Dr. Bucky was very flexible with some students to allow some freshmen for VHS, which is a huge amount of independence, to be in the library, to be on their own, and they all successfully passed that course, okay? I think they all got B pluses, okay? They did just fine. So the other, made for options would be an in-person course, which is an all intents and purposes summer school that started this week, okay? Darren Lucas, Nantucket High School math teacher, is teaching Algebra I Part II Monday through Thursday for the next five weeks, okay? Three hours a day, 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., okay? So that's 20 days, three hours, that's 60 hours of math between now and August 10th, okay? 13 students signed up for that class. For some students who have lots of jobs and then, hey, I just want to do it on my own, they sign up for Keystone Math, okay? Not a lot of support, but they've actually, we registered them early, they started kind of late March, early April, and they got going, they just got to finish that before their next school year begins, before sophomore year begins in September. This is probably the most flexible option. This is the one that I'm taking on where I have problem sets. I gave 29 students who signed up for independent study a practice set. They've had about a month to complete that. I met with a few students this morning, say it was the first day, I thought it went pretty well. Tomorrow, I have another 24 students coming, there's only four or five who decide to come on Tuesdays, I might be able to adjust that. But Wednesday was the original day, so Wednesdays, students meet with me for a check-in where they bring their problem sets, ask a few questions, I collect the problem sets, I give them a quiz, just to make sure that they're actually doing the work and they're not asking an older sibling, parent, or paying someone to do the work for them. Just keep them honest, and that's worked great. And then I give a little preview of the next problem set, and off they go, see you next week. So this independent study is the same five weeks. Darren's on one side in the CPS library, I'm on the other side in the NHS library. So we're actually dovetailing a little bit, which is cool, where if someone's absent in his class on Monday, they could come over and join my class that was today, just because he was a day ahead of me this week. I'm going to go a little bit faster because it requires a little more independent work as an independent study. The flexibility there is, if this in-person course is too slow for a student, and the student is really showing that they get it and they just didn't, you know, apply themselves fully in the past, that they could jump over to my class, and vice versa. If I see a student struggling, I say, you know what, you really need to come more. You really need to come a couple hours a day, four days a week. I recommend that you move over there. That hasn't happened yet because I've got the majority coming tomorrow, but there's some flexibility built in. On top of that, there are multiple reasons why different students are taking this class. Some students are taking it for what I described, to complete Algebra I Part II, so they can have Algebra II next year, keep AP Calculus on the table for senior year. Some are taking it just because they want to feel more prepared, and they just want to make a great start to their high school careers. And a few are even recommended by teachers who are sophomores, so they're older students who, you know what, they're struggling a little bit, they could benefit from a little bit of summer school. So instead of summer school through ESY, Special Ed, or Title I or Title III, this is kind of a really neat opportunity, is to, hey, why not offer it not just to ninth graders, but also any eighth grader who wants to stay up with their algebra, and any 10th grader who is struggling. So a lot of these options started as student and parent options, but I also looked at a lot of data. I looked at students' PARC scores, okay, from grade eight, I looked at DDM scores, district term measures with the high school math department, did a online two-day exam at the beginning of September 2016, and then teacher recommendation, you know? This student signed up for independent study, you know, Paul, what do you think? You know, or, hey Jed, this student signed up for in-person course, is that the right fit for them? Or, this student signed up for online, are they going to be fine on their own, okay? And maybe we need to steer them to one of the other choices. And we're still doing that. I had some good conversations today with a parent whose student felt like, I'm in the wrong thing, I really need to be in that one. So that's part of the flexibility, okay? With all this being said, all right, if a student who took part of Algebra I in grade eight and took Geometry sophomore year, if they don't option for anything in the summer, it is fine to take a full year of Algebra I in sophomore year, okay? So they had Geometry freshman year, Algebra I sophomore year. That is a great fit for another group of our students, you know, good population, you know, they've already kind of decided that they're more of a language student or a history buff, that they're not going to necessarily go on to a math major in the future, that, look, I'll just slow down, I want the full math class, you know, sophomore year, and that's really good timing because when they finish the Algebra I, which is predominantly what MCAS are based on sophomore year, they'll be in really good shape. They've already had the geometry. Then they can go to Algebra II sophomore, junior year, and then they could have a variety of choices senior, Precalc, AQR, Stats, things like that, okay? So this is the main point that we're doing this, okay? But it's kind of grown into a lot of options for a lot of students, okay? When I meet with students in the library for an hour each week, it can be more or less. I had two students today, and one student was there early, and I took her questions, and I said, you know, if you got this, here, here's the next packet, get going on that. You know, if you think you're good, you can leave at 10 o'clock, okay? You're all set in half an hour. Another student might have had like 30 questions, so I was able to give some more instruction. That student, that student stayed an hour and 15 minutes, okay? I'm here, I'm full-time, this is something I'm very passionate about, I'm going to do whatever needs to be done, whether it's more time or less time for each of these kids. If a student misses something, so our students and families traveling, going away, or they have a campus one week, there's a couple of students actually in Ecuador on a trip, is that this purposely ends August 10th with a buffer in mid-August, late August, for some makeup sessions before we get into scheduling for when the school year begins in September after Labor Day. A lot of parents, I've described as, look, you know, you've heard of summer reading, you've always had summer reading, why not summer math, okay? Even if you've taken the full algebra class, like, you'll see in a minute, there's some students who signed up just because they want to stay, they stay fresh, and I really respect their decision to do that as a boost. I talked about this, independent study of the 29, there are seven eighth graders who've had a full Algebra I this past year, and there are three from grade 10 who had Algebra I full, when they were freshmen, okay? They actually were in Geometry, and the teacher said, hey, look, you know, they could use a little bit of a boost, okay? Now, there's always consequences, okay? So I'm good, mostly always good, I hope, okay? So I definitely have some expectations that I correct things, give students some feedback on the quizzes, on the packets after they turn them in, Darren's doing the same thing, that they need to maintain a 70 average or higher, okay? It's not for credit, it's not going to go in a transcript, this is completing Algebra I from grade eight, okay? No more than two days absent, all right? So there's some flexibility, if a kid is absent, we'll chase them down, say, hey, look, you know, you got to finish this up, or you're going to be scheduled in a full year of Algebra I next year as a sophomore. You know, how are you feeling? You know, you remember the reasons why you're doing this, okay? This will lead to more students taking Algebra II. So you see these numbers in a minute. What that means is, more students are going to be eligible for Algebra II as a sophomore, okay? What that also means is, more students will be eligible for Chemistry as a sophomore, because Algebra II is at least a prerequisite for Chemistry, all right? So that is a motivating factor for some students, okay? To be taking Algebra II sophomore year, so they also can take Chemistry sophomore year because they may be science inclined, and they want to look at Physics or other AP classes that are offered in the Science Department, okay? Now, again, we're keeping AP Calc on the table as an option for a lot of students, so when these, the freshmen who just finished freshman year or sophomores, two years from now, in 2019, 2020, okay, when they're seniors, there may be not just 20 students signing up for AP Calc, there might be closer to 40 students for AP Calc, okay? Open enrollment is a good thing, okay? That's doubling that population. So I look at it like we're doing more math to move kids, to kind of push kids up to challenge themselves. At the same time, we've offered this for students who feel like they need a little bit of a boost. I really feel so strongly about this that maybe this is something that we do every year, okay? Maybe it's something we just kind of figure out how to budget within our ESY program, okay? Maybe it can't always be paid by the district, but maybe we can write it into a grant somehow, or you have someone in the central office who's willing to do it as part of their time and their job responsibilities, okay? I'm not necessarily me, I'm not trying to make a job for myself, but I love this and would always continue to do it. All right, so shifting gears slightly, I want to have your attention, okay? I just snuck in a slide here about summer school just began this week, and I got some numbers. We had 280 students register for summer school. It wasn't that long ago when that number was 100, but it's almost tripled in less than five years, the number of students who are registered for summer school, okay? So you've seen how that has grown. Of 280, 210 have shown up, okay? So that's exactly 75%. That number will go up because some, oh, I forgot, or I didn't get the call, I was away, you know, the traffic, I just turned around, gave up, and went home. A variety of things, the first week we work out, but by next week, those classes will be full. And if they're not completely full, we start calling other students who were kind of on a list but didn't qualify under the first round, so we start to open up more seats, okay? And we just kind of look at needs and bring more students, as many students as possible fill up those sections. 75% by the way is an improvement because the last couple of years, it was around 50% on the first day. If we had 200 students signed up, only 100 showed up in the first couple of days, even though they turned in the form and they said they'd be there, okay? For whatever reason, they just finally realized, out for 4th of July, busy, whatever, oh, I can't make that day, what was I thinking? So we worked through that this first week, there's a little bit of adjustments. So in the past, summer school has really been an hour of reading, an hour of writing, an hour of math. That continues, but we've also used some MCUs, model curriculum units from the Mass DESE. We supplied more math materials and content. Cali even has, you know, gotten some free licenses from iReady and has worked with EL teachers to incorporate some math and math language in our ELL sections, which is awesome. We try to make it fun with games and activities, and we even have some definite resources, you know, for transitioning to Eureka Math at the elementary school, summer's a great time to kind of test drive and pilot some of those things, okay? As a physics major and a science lover, I even think that there could be an opportunity here to get some science kits and some science work going because in my opinion, science kind of covers all those things, reading, writing, math, not to mention listening, speaking, and thinking, okay? That's the ESY on that. In the summer breakdown, here are the numbers, okay? 13 signed up with Darren, eight are on their own doing online, independent study, 15, 11, and three. So of that 29, only 11 are really doing it to complete Algebra I Part II. So it's great to see six and eight, 14, doing a full course. These 11 really had to be eligible and get teacher recommendations to do just independent study, but again, like I said, there's some flexibility, I'll make it whatever it needs to be. And then look at the kids' full algebra in the past, 15 of them, they don't have to do this, okay? So when we opened it up, more students came. There are a few students who are new to MPS, we didn't have as much data on them, if they came from another state or from a private school that doesn't have PARK or MCAS results. So total, 50 students are participating, so that could be AP Calc, not all are going to probably follow through, but it keeps AP Calc on the table for 50 more students. There's the three I talked about, the VHS, successful, they're already done. You can read these here, it says different stats about where the kids are and what their tracks are, okay? All right, so I'm going to go back. What does this all mean, okay? So what we're doing is bringing Algebra I, more Algebra I into grade eight, okay? So what does that mean for that problem of, is it grade eight standards or is it algebra standards? That's a lot. You know, at one point, Algebra I was a two-year course. Now, we're basically putting three years of standards into one year, all right? So that's a lot. So going back to an old DESE slide, this is what the DESE has, you know, blown the dust off and said, this is what we would like to have happen, okay, in districts, to have more students ready for rigorous math classes in high school and beyond, okay? We would like more students to take Algebra I in grade eight, but that means moving some of the grade eight standards down to grade seven, okay? A little disclaimer is that the Algebra I and grade eight standards, there's a lot of overlap, okay? They're not completely different, okay? There's a little bits and pieces here and there, but that's my job, to kind of figure out, okay, what is missing if someone's in Algebra I class, what are they missing in grade eight? So if we move some more grade eight down to grade seven, okay, to kind of free up that cluster here, that means that this becomes an accelerated class, okay? And the next presentation later this summer, we're going to talk about middle school and the idea of a pre-algebra course in grade seven to get students ready for what is a true model algebra course in grade eight, so more students are eligible for that, okay? And then they don't have to double up in high school to keep Calculus, which means they don't have to drop an elective, which is one of the initial goals. That does mean though, is that students are looked at even earlier, okay? Now, at first blush, like, oh God, you know, we're making decisions based upon the grade six performance and grade six recommendation? Yeah, for some kids. But the point is, is that students can jump the track at any time, okay? They could jump it here with maybe a summer boost, like what we're doing now, okay? They can do something online, all right? Because a student might mature and just realize, hey, I really like math. I had one teacher turn me on to it, I get it, makes sense to me. This is something I could see myself doing, I want to keep this on the table right now. So it might happen here, it might happen here, it might happen here. Students could still double up, it just means they'd have to give something up, okay? Dr. Bucky also reminded me, there is a non-traditional track, which is always open. If a student wanted to make a proposal to the high school principal or assistant principal that they want to take Algebra II over the summer through Keystone Math or something else privately, they have to pay for that, and all this is free by the way, I think I said that. But they could pay for that in order to kind of double up without giving up elective during their school year. That's a non-traditional track, but it is all about options and flexibility. It's a really interesting slide, there's a lot going on here. This bottom one is something that we have not delved into, it was discussed probably five or six years ago. Some whole districts around Massachusetts are kind of blending together. So it's, you might have heard Tim Saradell talk about Math I, Math II, Math III. It basically means Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, even Precalc are taught at the same time. You're teaching a little bit of algebra, a little bit of geometry, a little bit of Algebra II, a little bit of Precalc altogether, and just over whatever how many years it needs to be, because you notice there's no Precalc in here, so it's three years of math, it covers everything, so it basically covers four years and three over time, and then students are ready for AP Calculus senior year. That's something that we have not done here, but that is a third option that some districts are doing across the state. Comments?
I'll start at the end then. I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Can you remind me why we are offering AP Calculus for our students? Can you remind me why we are offering AP Calculus for our students instead of honors or, you know, regular class hours?
Yep, yep. So I'll give what my sense is from a few years ago, but then Dr. Bucky's gonna have to bail me out, you know, for the latest kind of move. A few years ago, when I was the math department head, we had both. And students who were taking calculus, it was two or three students. And the AP Calculus class that was happening literally like next door at the same time was covering the same material. And why not have the students all prepared for the test? There's no harm in, in, in prepping for the test, okay? And we talked about open enrollment, take that class. If we have one or two students signed up for just calculus, it didn't really make sense, okay? However, you're right in that it's possible that with 40 more students, 50 students, that we might need to look at that, but I think it goes back to the fact, open enrollment, why not push them all, you know, to go for the test? Because, you know, it'd be great to get some college credit, you know, in, in, in high school. Is that close to?
I have another question.
Sure.
Also, our, our PBL classes for eighth grade students who are not getting a traditional eighth grade math class or the Algebra One, what are we doing to help make sure they are prepared for their high school math?
So they, I know that some students took PBL and Algebra One this year, so they would go Geometry, Algebra Two, Pre-Calculus, Calculus.
Talking specifically, sorry, just about the PBL, no math.
Right, so I know there's some students who had PBL but did not have any Algebra One, so they would be on, they would be on this track, okay? They would be taking Algebra One freshman year, okay, which is the traditional track. If they want to get to AP Calculus, it'd be doubling up sophomore year, okay? Which is possible, it's just not ideal because you're giving up an elective, okay? But it's possible. What is happening here is, what I said is, because everyone's in Geometry, they couldn't double up, because you couldn't double up Algebra One and Algebra Two. You know, they had Geometry in freshman year. So this is for that, to get to Calculus. Not everyone needs AP Calculus, but if a student decides, "Hey, you know, I cranked Algebra One, I love math," they're gonna have to make a tough decision sophomore year to take the two math classes to get the AP Calc. Then there is, and it happens, there's two or three students probably each year who might do the non-traditional track, two or three out of 450, who would say, "You know what, I'm gonna do it on my own, I'm gonna register for Keystone, it's been done before, and I'll get the credit." Just you need to get that approved by the high school principal, you know, so it's honored, so that's, they can take the class outside of school, basically.
I'm gonna interject, Michael, to, to your question, Jen. And one of the reasons we didn't talk about the middle school, and we're gonna do that later, is that we wanna see the MCAS results for all of our eighth graders and look at that to be able to speak to your question.
Perfect, thank you.
Just a quick question. What does AP, any AP course equate to at the college level? When you say college credit, what does that equate to? I'm sure there's a general answer, but each school is probably different.
Yep.
I'm just looking for a general.
Yep, so it's, if you get the four or the five, okay, it's, it's worth, I think it's a, it's a three-credit, typical three-credit college class. If, if most colleges have, you know, like a 30-credit requirement or around there, that it's worth three of those 30 credits. For, for most students, it's, it's a stepping stone to higher level math in college, meaning that they don't have to take calculus freshman year. They can jump right into differential equations or linear equations, and then go to quantum mechanics and, you know, other things down, down the road. They're looking for really high-level math, and they'd like to look to a doctorate or an engineering degree or something like that. So it just saves a course freshman year. However, including myself, who did take AP Calculus, all right, who did not get a four or five in high school, I took Calculus freshman year. I took Calculus Differentials first semester, and then I took Integral second semester. And then I went right into a physics degree. I just, I didn't, I had to give up some of my philosophy, religion, psychology courses that I was enjoying, okay? I didn't take a lot of English or language classes, but my, my schedule was science. I just had to, you know, at some point, you have to make a choice, you know? Are you gonna study this, or are you gonna study that? You can't study everything, all right, unless you wanna stay in school forever, which is not a bad thing, but that's kind of the answer there.
So just, sorry. For the students that we had, you know, several students, more than one AP course, they could, do you know the results of that?
Through the chair.
Oh, yes.
Okay. I'm presenting the AP results at our next meeting, so I'll make sure to consider this more in depth for the next meeting because we have all that data in now for all of our AP courses.
And have you ever experienced a school letting them or counting for AP courses for an incoming freshman?
There are students who graduate college in three years or less.
And then stop.
Right, and then there's students who would like to stay for four years, but study that much higher, get to 400, 500-level classes, you know, earlier than, say, senior, senior year. Other questions or?
Mike, I've got a question. Algebra in the eighth grade.
Yep.
I have always thought that algebra depends on a certain amount of brain elevation, that you're certain kids are ready for it and certain kids aren't. How are you gonna sort of address that issue?
So that's exactly what we're doing, because we're trying to, to have more entry points and more options. So if students are identified in grade six that they're ready for pre-algebra in grade seven, then they go right into algebra in grade eight. If there are students in grade seven who are just taking just grade seven, not the pre-algebra, but they bloom a little bit later, or the readiness comes, they could jump to that algebra class in grade eight. They may have to work a little bit harder, fill in some gaps, do some extra help or homework, but that's, that happens all the time, okay? Then the student matures or loves algebra or all of a sudden clicks freshman year, okay? They could double up, all right, in high school. What we're trying to do is make this ninth-grade algebra class the same as this grade-eight algebra class, because that wasn't always the case. This past year it was, because Tim, high school math teacher who taught the class at high school, taught a model algebra class here, okay?
I, I would have to say too, I just wanna remind people that algebra doesn't all of a sudden appear in the eighth grade. Students in first grade have algebra. Eight plus one equals three, what is eight? So there's a progression, so I don't want anybody maybe in the audience thinking, "Wow, you know, this, this just magically appears in eighth grade." There are steps to it. I do agree, though, that not all students are ready for the rigor developmentally, their own developmental schedule. And that's, as Michael said, is why we're trying to have different entry points for, for students. I, I think that, I, I would just say, simply having 50 students decide that they're going to work on math this summer is a great thing. You know, and, and in a district that has shown that it's struggling as a district with our math scores, for the first year, when this was plugged in, you know, two or three months, you know, before, in advance, it's remarkable. And I would say that I would expect this program to continue at the school district's expense. I don't, Michael wasn't quite sure how to, where to go with that, but I think that that's something that we assume going forward. And if we can get it to 100 kids or 150, so much for better. And, and who's to say that that shouldn't be accelerated math in elementary school summer? You know, not just remedial math, but acceleration, and this is all about acceleration. So pretty soon, you won't see summer school as just remediation. You're going to see it, you know, for all students wherever they are.
Just a couple of comments. And I think to both Tim and Mike's point, I think it's wonderful that we have 280 students that signed up for summer school, and I definitely see the acceleration piece, and I think that's exciting because we've been talking about that for a long time. My question is, if we're going back to, in eighth grade, having students either taking eighth-grade math or Algebra One, are you prepared to be able to accommodate all of the students that are eligible to take Algebra One in eighth grade? And I ask that only because historically, that has been a concern for parents.
Yeah.
And I just want to hear from you what we've put in place so that we can make sure if we're offering this for any student that qualifies, that we would have the space.
Yep, so what a key rectangle here is high school model Algebra One in grade eight, okay? Behind all this are the standards, okay? We need to build that course with what it needs to be in grade eight and also the model algebra high school content, okay? Now, that is compacting it, which is why it's great, we can get more in grade seven. But again, we control over, okay, what absolutely needs to be taught here, what should be covered there? You know, if a student doesn't have that, what are they gonna be the gaps? But that ends up being the teacher's responsibility, the curriculum director's responsibility in differentiating instruction. You know, students come to us all across the gamut of, you know, their retention of skills and concepts. So teachers are constantly cutting themselves in thirds and fourths to be different things to different people at the same time. We can build a course that does whatever it needs to do, and then each, then the teacher needs to be with each student, okay?
So can I just interrupt you?
Yeah.
I think I'm hearing you say that you could have Algebra One and eighth-grade, eighth math, eighth-grade math students in the same class, is that what you're saying?
Course-wise, it's, it's gonna be either-or, but there's, there's a lot of overlap between grade eight and Algebra One, okay? They're not substantially separate, okay? Tim is using the Eureka Math materials, okay? The Eureka Math Algebra One is a true algebra course, all right? A lot of the grade-eight standards, okay, need to happen before that. So they, they need to happen in grade seven, which is what's happening here. So we're going to do that by designing a pre-algebra course, so more students would be prepared one year early. But we don't wanna just eliminate students. It's not about saying only some kids, because that's kind of the, the problem we had in the past. It has to be entry points along the way, but it might mean, yeah, they might have to do something a little bit extra to fill in some of those things. But that's on the teacher or curriculum director, like, "All right, what did they miss? What were the standards in grade eight that they missed? Can they be caught up in Algebra One, okay? Are they gonna be caught up in Algebra Two?" There's, there's a lot of ratios and proportions and just some basic skills that are repetitive, but there might be some statistics and probability that exist in grade eight that if a student jumped from grade seven to algebra, that would probably be the biggest kind of gap. Like, okay, they didn't get any of it compressed, all right? What did they miss, all right? But we're addressing that, you know? We look at the standards, and we can see, we're, we're building units, we're, we're building courses, okay, with a variety of resources to, to address that, okay? One of those things, though, is to compact, okay? And this, this, I mean, literally, this is what, six years old, okay? But this is what the state re-released just earlier this spring, okay? It just happened to dovetail nicely with Mr. Kozart's idea that, you know what? We need to start looking at, you know, a little bit more rigor, enrichment, acceleration in, in, in grade seven. Okay, we need to challenge our middle school kids a little bit, who are ready. But as long as we have the opportunity for them to jump back in, if they're ready, if they choose to, later on, at eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade.
It just sounds like there's gonna be the need for more individualized plans for students.
Right, so, I mean, we're keeping the school year going by having five weeks in the summer, right? You know, so it's, it's like, it's summer math. It's, it's not just summer reading, it's some summer math. And some of those gaps can, can be filled this summer. You know, very deliberate with the concepts that I chose, okay? With input from the high school math department, but with Darren Lucas to say, "Hey, what are some key things like factoring and quadratics and, you know, completing the square or using the quadratic formula or graphing that have to, that have to be down cold for a student to be ready in Algebra Two?" Because there's so much stuff in Algebra Two, there's not a ton of time to kind of reteach those things. There is a little bit of time in here, okay? Because they're not that far away from each other when you say grade eight versus Algebra One. But that, that's why we're making sure the kids are, are ready. And that's why, if you look at those numbers, you know, it's not just the kids who had some algebra. There's, you know, 15, argue three who probably have had, you know, more than that, 15, 15. Add up all those numbers, what's that, 20, 25? There's potentially 25, half of the kids, technically, probably, they don't need this, but they're doing it to keep up or, or, or be prepared, be ready for, for the next step.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, just, yeah, some comments. I think that this is really great, you know, to have from a student perspective. I think Algebra One is probably one of the most important for just students.
Yep.
And it's a really core foundation for you to have. It appears, you know, not only in Algebra Two, but SATs, ACTs, you see it peek out, you see it in, I'm just, I'm just saying. It's really important. And the fact you have 15, probably three more students who want to enhance that a little better is saying a lot. I also think that, like you were saying, students mature at their own rate in math, and I think that giving them the opportunity to kind of get ahead and jump in maybe when they didn't realize that Algebra One was where they wanted to be in eighth grade is really important. I know a lot of students who, I mean, they get better later and then that happens, that's opportunities.
Thank you.
I, I don't think there's anything that's been said already that I can add to, except that, Mike, I wanna thank you for your enthusiasm and your, your energy and your commitment to do this program. It shows that you're really passionate about it, and that's usually what it takes for programs to be successful, so thank you. And I, I do feel, I'm gonna be very curious to see how it works out with middle school math. I'm excited for that presentation.
Yep.
Because I do respect that people develop at different paces, but we wanna make sure that every kid who, if we're gonna give kids open enrollment courses in high school, we wanna make sure they're prepared to have those choices fulfilled during middle school, if we, if we can. So, you know, I just, I'll be really curious to see how that works out.
I'll, I'll hold myself accountable to, you know, later on this summer, what's the feedback from the students and the parents?
Yeah, that would be great.
How'd the class go, you know? Do you feel valuable, did you learn anything? Do you feel more prepared, does it make sense?
Yeah.
And then the very concrete proof is going to be sophomore year next, next year. You know, how, how is this cohort gonna do in the MCAS in next year? How is this cohort gonna do in SATs? Because you're absolutely right, Natalie, right? Because Ella, your sister?
Yeah.
Natalie, there, if they know things not much quicker, that saves so much time in the SAT when you're tied, right? You can't teach yourself the, the formula because you don't have a minute per question, right? If you just know it, that's how you get a 600 opposed to a 500. 600-plus, I should say, approaching 700.
Thank you.
Is it the longest presentation ever?
In July. Is this the one you called me about, or is it this one? That one, okay, good. Okay, so Martin, thank you so much for preparing this. If you don't mind coming up, but... Martin's prepared for us a gift donation summary per our request of gifts that were donated to Nantucket Public Schools throughout FY17, and it's remarkable. There's 200, where did he, oh, there you are.
Yes.
There's 200, over $249,000 in gifts from various people. I don't know if you wanna say anything about this report, Martin?
It's, it was actually a great idea to do this report. I go through these numbers, obviously, as we go along throughout the year because we use them, but seeing how much it is in total for a year and how far-reaching it is within the district, it covers so many different things. Some of these gifts have no dollar value, as you saw, but still, it's, it's amazing. It's just been a great year. I think it's probably a year, I don't think? So we're very thankful. It's, it's great for me to support.
It's, it's pretty remarkable, and I think it just underscores and highlights for everybody how generous this community is when it comes to supporting our children. how generous this community is when it comes to supporting our children. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Martin on this?
Just a quick thing. What I'd like to see, it is great, it'd be great to see how much each entity total. Is that difficult to pull together?
No, not at all. I was thinking how to approach it. I didn't do it that way. I did it by...
By date.
Individual gift.
Right.
But I can do that, and I can present that report to you this summer, this next meeting. So, it's not hard at all.
Thank you.
I also want to say that I was impressed, the response of the community to the We Hours program.
That was amazing to see.
This was a program that finished very strongly this year, provided great service.
And helped so many families.
Forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Almost as soon, commitments, almost as soon as we took over. So, this was just an impressive response.
Absolutely.
Just as a comment, and this was always a comment that Robin Harvey would make when we would have donations, just of the generosity of our community. Walking in here today, she obviously knew this was coming up, because I noticed for the first time, it's probably been there a while, and I just noticed tonight Robin's name plaque on the tree by the swimming pool. Now, please don't tell me it's been there for a year. Tonight was the night I noticed it. And I always think of Robin when we have these generous donations, and so thank you to the community for the support of our children.
Absolutely. I might ask if the secretary may want to work with me on, when we get the summary report, some thank you notes to different organizations from the school committee.
Absolutely.
Directly. I think that would be a really nice gesture. Okay, if there are no other comments, we'll move along to the policy FFA memorials. And this is up for discussion, not for vote, vote, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, Mike, I don't know if you want to preface this?
No, this is a new policy that came from masks. The subcommittee looked at it and thought we should add it two hours. We typically, as you just noted, look at it, see if there are any questions, if anybody wants to offer anything now or later. We do have a subcommittee meeting this week, so we'll take a look at it and then we'll bring it to the next meeting for a vote if there are no changes.
Fantastic. Does anybody have any questions or comments this evening on this?
I just would like to say, it would be nice to have a list of what we currently have, if that's possible, just like you mentioned.
What do you mean?
Seeing the plaque for Robin. It would be nice if we could somehow have a list of what we do currently have in place.
A list of memorials.
Yeah, we mentioned that in our sub-meeting.
In our meeting, yeah.
Okay, we'll put that together.
Great.
And then, of course, I have this virus that's coming up, but now you've explained it, so.
Fantastic. Okay, we can move on to committee discussion and votes to be taken. The first vote is to approve school handbook updates, and it just looks like a few simple changes. Is this...
This is the high schools. We did, because Eve Marie is new and Kim is off at an Aspen workshop today. We thought that we would do this in August.
Great.
But we did have John's changes, if it's something that you wanted to act on tonight, or we can wait and do them all at the next meeting.
Personally, I'm comfortable with going ahead with a vote on this.
I mean, I'm not.
Okay.
I won't abstain. Quick thing, can we, even though we've already approved the agenda, can we edit it by putting handbook updates? Because it looks like we're approving the handbooks on the agenda.
You are, you would be. That is a school committee function, to approve the handbooks. What we have typically done is just bring any changes to the school committee rather than bring the whole policy book, because we have approved them in the past.
So, essentially, we're just approving the changes.
Right.
So, but we can't reflect that because we, in, for lack of a better word, in perpetuity, we're just, we're approving, we actually are approving handbooks. We're not just approving updates.
We're approving the handbooks with these changes.
Can we note that in the agenda? That's all I'm saying. I just think it, even though I hear what you're saying, I just find it misleading to say that we're approving the handbook when some of us may not have read the handbook in a while, and it may be something in there that we may be missing, and I think...
Well, I think then, probably, Zona, you will want the whole handbook, because it is the purview of the school committee to approve the handbook, so...
So, why don't we go ahead and table this vote for when we get all of the recommended changes? And I'm not sure if this is, if everything that's highlighted is an addition for the high school, or if there are edits. I know that for policies, we look at strike-through text, so if there is text that's been removed, if perhaps we can have this edited to reflect that. I would assume that everything highlighted is just additional, but there may be things that are stricken, and that way you could reference...
The whole section is deleted, yeah.
Right, so we could go through and reference that in the current handbook. Is everybody comfortable with tabling that until the other schools are prepared?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
You need a motion.
I would like a motion to table this vote. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And then, did I get, you were asking, requesting for copies of the handbooks to be dispersed, right?
They're available online, so I think we, unless anybody needs them.
I've already started my review.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I've always wondered, too, if that's something that the policy committee should be looking at, you know, in addition to our policies.
We talked about it briefly one time.
I mean, you could task the subcommittee to review the handbooks and bring them so that it almost becomes a consent agenda on this, if that's your wish.
It's a lot more work for us this summer, Zona.
I was going to ask you if you felt comfortable taking that on between now and early August, because presumably the handbooks have to be ready to go.
How about we take a look at it at our next meeting and have a discussion with the subcommittee, and then come back with a decision.
If you could give me a recommendation, that would be great. Okay, great. So, then, the next item is to vote to approve the MOU between the Nantucket Community Schools and the Town of Nantucket for the community recreational programming at the locations that cover the Charles J. Gardner Tennis Courts at Jetties Beach, tennis only, Tom Nevers Park and playing fields, team sports, sports camps, recreational activities, Delta Fields, playing field teams, excuse me, playing fields, including team sports, sports camps, recreational activities, Nobody or Farm Road playing fields, team sports, sports camps, and recreational activities, and Winter Park recreational activities only. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. A vote to approve a gift donation from Christina Craighead to NPS Biology Department of two microscopes, one Nikon microscope and one general microscope. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I thought that was really special.
It is special. Is anyone opposed? Okay, great, thank you. Vote to approve the gift donation from Cape and Islands Workforce Development Board for the NHS Robotics Program of $125.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then, we have the amended policy FA, Facility Development Goals. May I have a motion to approve FA?
To approve?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, I would request a motion to table policy FF for the next meeting to give a little bit more time for review and discussion by the policy subcommittee. So, could I have a motion to table that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. And a motion to approve the June 20, 2017 meeting minutes?
Move the approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And transfers and invoices?
Move the approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic, thank you. Mr. Cozord?
I have included in your packet a projected enrollment, interesting to look at.
We thought we were out of the growth one.
With the split, with the intermediate and the elementary, I think it's sort of interesting to see, and nice to see that we have two schools under 400, which is going to be wonderful. Actually, three schools under 400, we count Cyrus Pierce. The one thing that you will see under the kindergarten, those numbers have grown. I have given Kim the green light to add a sixth section. We had five sections. You may hear a little buzz out in the community, people wondering what that's going to look like, and we will go with six sections. And all of those numbers, of course, are works in progress. We'll have to see what happens over the next month as we move forward. Pretty close to our projections from January, but it's inexact science. I don't think we projected 120 kindergarteners this coming year. I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of those.
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Hiring update, I've kept you apprised through the Friday updates. We are still looking to fill critical positions at the high school, the media specialist position, and the, there's a high school math and a high school ELL that we are working on. We have filled the guidance position with a very strong candidate that some of you may know, and that's Ms. Alahi. I don't remember her...
Anita.
Married name?
Small.
Small, Anita Small. And she will be joining the guidance department. I think that'll be a great addition.
Excellent.
At the middle school, Peter's back to the drawing board looking for a science teacher, science teacher who had indicated he was coming with Drew. So, that is in process. And a special education teacher, we had a resignation from Mrs. Franzudo late in June. So, there are two positions that Peter is searching for. At the intermediate school, we're looking for a fourth grade teacher and a fifth grade teacher. Tess Holden is leaving the island, so that opened up the fourth grade position, and a fifth grade teacher moved to the Cyrus Pierce School, so those two positions. And I know that Eve Marie has been contacting candidates and setting up interviews for those. And then, at the elementary school, the aforementioned kindergarten position, the IDSC, which is a special education position, and then two preschool special education positions there. So, everybody is busy working, and we're not yet in panic mode, although I can see it rising in the eyes of the building principals a little bit. So, I think that pretty much covers hiring, unless I missed something. I think Diane has a position or two that she's still trying to fill in as well.
Okay, great. I mean, not great, but great.
Right, we're on it.
We're on it.
We're on it.
I feel confident, that's what I should say.
The third item, actually, I meant for that to be a retreat update, and Melissa has been, I think, herding cats, as you referred to it, to try to set up a date, and I think we're set for Wednesday, July 26, at 4:30. So, I think that we'll probably end up doing that at the special ed conference room, but we are investigating one other spot.
Unless anyone has any other suggestions, but finding space in the early evening in the summer is very difficult.
What about where we met last year? It was really nice.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, downtown is problematic, and NHA is in a transition to a new leader, and so I was a little reluctant to go down that road. So, we'll work on it, and if anybody has any great ideas...
I like the Link's idea that came up last year.
Right.
Not sure we'll get much work done, but... Also, Mike, just to tag on to that, if people have discussion items that they'd like to recommend for strategic planning, I'm sorry, for the retreat, why don't you go ahead and just email Mike directly?
I do have one or two policies that we mentioned that we'd like to talk about, and I think it's probably the first half of that time we need to talk about strategic planning and what is the board's vision and priorities. So, I would hope that people will do some thinking about, you know, what initiatives would we see or you see as a school committee for that effort? We're doing the same work with the administrative team as well.
Okay.
And then, on the horizon, as John mentioned, he will have the advanced placement results for you at the next meeting. There are some interesting and some good results that I'm sure he'll be excited to talk about. And then, he's doing some terrific work, sort of triangulating the AP results with the class grades, which is really important to us, to make sure that the rigor of the class, as the teacher sees it, is the same as the rigor that the people scoring the advanced placement see. And I would just add one other editorial, I'm sure John will cover it next time. While we're interested, and the AP results are important, they don't drive our advanced placement offerings. Because we have open enrollment, there are going to be students who have a one and a two, and it doesn't mean that it wasn't worth the fact that they took that, because they will be better prepared for a college course. So, I just sort of preset it that way.
And also, I... Go attending some college tours over the winter and spring, they always are, the counselors are always encouraging students to take the most challenging courses offered in the school, and that even if you get a B in an advanced class, where you may have gotten an A in an honors class, they'd rather, they rank that a little bit higher in their evaluation of your commitment to your studies, so that's always a good. It's always good to be challenged, if you can.
And then, typically, at the August meeting, we'll bring student activity accounts and any changes that we have, any deletions of clubs or additions of clubs, and that will look a little bit different since we're bad at a school. So, the clubs may be the same, but the categories will change a little bit.
And, Mike, will we bring the school handbooks to the early August meeting or the mid-August?
We will try to bring them to the first August meeting because...
We need to get them to families.
And they'll need to have them ready to go and published.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a quick question? Will NIS have their own handbook?
Yes, we've, I've already talked to Eve Marie, and she is looking at the NES, but she is going to use probably much of that, but tweak it for the intermediate level.
My last question was, when do we have a sense that the teacher's negotiation contract, will that be in a September?
I hope that we will bring that to the second August meeting, although that, we will be voting on it before the teachers do at that point.
Right, because they won't have...
But the hope is that they will get it out to their membership this summer and be ready to take a vote right away, and so we wouldn't have to wait for our September meeting in that case.
Great.
Because it's going to mean some work for the business office to make the changes in contracts.
Yes, yep, for sure. Okay, thank you. Are there any updates from subcommittees, work groups, liaison reports, any acknowledgements? Okay, fantastic. So, our next meeting will be August 14. Okay, fantastic. So, our next meeting will be August 1st, and the week before that, July 26th at 4:30, we'll have a retreat, and we'll let you know where the location is. That will be posted appropriately. Great, may I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, thank you so much.